Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
We call this meeting to order. Mr. Town Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Certainly. Councilman Goldsmith. Councilman Trolinger. Well, he has his hand up. Mayor James.
Here.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would everyone please stand and join us in the meeting? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Wait. Councilwoman Trolinger says you need to enable.
First, that's all right. First thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes from January 10th of the closed session and January 17th. Do I have it?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Oh, I always forget that one. Approval of the meeting agenda. I just wanted to make sure you were paying attention, so thank you for that. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. We have a proposed amendment to the agenda. It will be after the minutes and prior to public comment. We'll call it 3.0.1, and it is a, I believe it's a proclamation.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve our amended agenda as outlined by Mr. Manuel?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting agenda with the noted corrections for January 24th, 2023.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes for January 10th closed session and January 17th. I trust that councilors have the opportunity to review that, and I will entertain a motion if so moved.
Madam Mayor, we'll banish the January 17th.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to our new addition on there, which is a proclamation. As many of you may know, next month is Black History Month, and we are already ending our first month here in 2023. And so, if it would be the will of the council, I would like to read a proclamation for Black History Month for February 2023. Any objections? From Andrew? All right. Whereas Black History Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. And whereas the town of La Plata encourages the preservation of our African-American history and applauds the efforts of our groups such as the Willing Helper Society and the African-American Heritage Society, as well as the La Plata Historic Preservation Commission, to ensure that African-American contributions and achievements are recognized for their integral part in the history of La Plata and the surrounding areas. Now, therefore, we, the council of the town of La Plata, proclaim February 2023 Black History Month in the town of La Plata in appreciation of the many achievements of the La Plata's African-American community and those across this nation and its history, and encourage our community to unite in making this a period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all peoples. This was signed by myself, Mayor Janine James, Councilman James Goldsmith, Councilman Matthew Trolinger, Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward, and Councilman Dave Jenkins. So, next month, and always, recognize the contributions of African-Americans and everyone, you know, eh, let's be kind. So, next month is African, is Black History Month, and so thank you, council, for allowing me to read that. Next would be public comment. If anybody would like to speak, we ask that you state your name, whether you live within the incorporated town limits, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Town Clerk, do we have anybody that has indicated they would like to speak this evening?
Madam Mayor, no one online or in person has signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you very much. We will move on. Chief, with your report. Hi. Again, council, I hope that you were able to look at the chief's report. And do you have any questions for the chief?
Thank you. Doesn't matter. Thank you, chief, for your report. I have a couple of questions. Looking at the trends of the youth crimes in DC and coming down through Waldorf, I saw that we had zero juvenile arrests. Are you concerned about the migration south of those incidences, and are we prepared to handle them?
Stay here. We had 13 total juvenile arrests. I'm sorry.
You're in light, Rich.
There we go. We had 13 juvenile arrests last year, and those were mostly for crimes of violence or whatever. We, most of our juvenile interactions are low-key. We like to keep it that way. But it's, we follow, every morning, we read the trends coming out of DC, Prince George's County, and the region itself. So, I was in a meeting yesterday with some commanders from the Prince George's County Police Department of their carjackings. The vast majority of the people committing them are under 18. Excuse me, with half being about under 16 that are committing the carjackings in Prince George's. Fortunately, we haven't seen it come this far south.
Okay. And then my last question would be, PFC Tippett is participating in the Maryland Police and Correctional Training Commission for residential crime prevention. What role will he play when he's completed with that?
So, it's residential and commercial, and I don't think we put commercial in there, but he's able to go to someone's house, walk around it, and make suggestions on how they can make their house a little more difficult to be the victim of a burglary or some sort of theft on the lawn. And we do the same thing for our small businesses as well. So, you know, things like, I worked at a grocery store, and you always put those great big signs in the front windows saying hamburgers on sale for X amount, you know? And that's really not a good idea, because as people walk by, they can't see what's going on inside the store.
Okay.
So, simple things like keeping your bushes manicured in front of the house. So, if somebody's trying to get in the window, you can see it. So, it's something called Sept Ed, and he was excited to go there. He voluntarily actually asked for the class. We were excited to send it.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Thank you, chief, again, for that comprehensive report. And I guess just another, for a follow-on from Councilwoman Bryant Ward's question. Any concerns or any other concerns you have with the trend so far?
Well, you know, we-
Other than, other than that keep going up?
Well, we see the 63% increase in calls for service. I'm hoping that that is an anomaly, and we're going to see, I had predicted when we sat down with our commandant staff that we would come in around 12,000 calls for service in January, and clearly, we eclipse that with 15,000, almost 700 calls for service. So, and it's a region-wide trend. It's just not something that we're seeing here in La Plata. It is, it is region-wide. So, we do the best we can to prepare for it, you know? Any sort of call that's an emergency call in this county gets immediately answered, which is great. But we do call stack on other types of calls that are not as high of a priority. And that's just, that's the nature of the beast. And coming from working in Greenbelt, we call stacked every day, all day. So.
Thank you.
Chief, with the opening of Aldi next month and Planet Fitness, two very large box stores, have you anticipated a difference in the way that your officers will be patrolling?
Well, you know, we spend less time up that far north for the Aldi, so it's just going to be making sure that our cars are seen up there. We have a few spare cars, so from time to time, we'll put them out, just as something for people to see to hopefully bring some crime prevention. But no concerns with either of those coming in, and we just want to make sure we provide them the same service we provide every other business in town.
And one of the things that you have done for many years, and now you've got three council members to join you on February 3rd. It will be the Special Olympics Polar Bear Plunge. I understand it's going to be very warm that day, so thank you for that. And it's anything to make, to raise awareness for Special Olympics and raising money for them. So, I know I am really excited to join you on that. And we should have fun with that, but thank you, thank you for that, for doing that always.
Absolutely. Just one other thing, if I may. April the 2nd, we're teaming up with Pathfinders for Autism, and we're going to have an autism awareness event. Jordan Madison is sparing this up. He has been in contact with his counterparts at the Montgomery County Police Department, who do this several times a year to get ideas. So, having Pathfinders come down and join us, we're hoping for a good event. You know, one out of every 51 of our neighbors is on the autism spectrum, so we just want to make sure we're continuously reaching out to that community.
Fantastic. Once you get information out, we will spread it out there. I know I will spread it out on social media, so make it aware.
Yeah, we're pushing hard to have BJ Serhof join us, but I don't know if he'll be able to.
Oh, that would be great. Thank you, chief. All right, next up is Director Harrington. Do we have any questions for Director Harrington? Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Thank you. Thank you, Director Harrington, for the large amount of work you and your staff are doing. I know it's a lot, so it's appreciated. And thanks for the continuing discussions on APFO. So, what's the next steps? I did listen to the one on January 18th, so I wasn't sure what's the next steps.
Next steps are to continue drafting the code. Jamie Kendrick Meaden Hunt is working on the traffic portion, and I'm working on the rest of it. We have reached out to emergency services, and we also have an email with the hospital to start setting up some discussions to add an emergency services section. So, the next step is for us to actually draft the code and then proceed forward with the review from there.
Would there be any consideration to adding fiscal impact analysis as part of this APFO?
Yes, I believe that was part of the discussion with the planning commission to consider that option.
Fiscal, fiscal impact analysis. Fiscal impact analysis.
And what do you mean by that?
When a developer submits a proposal, what was it going to cost the town to provide those services and then maintain them?
That wasn't part of the discussion, per se. We were looking at emergency services as a kind of separate entity and what they would need. So, I don't know if that would necessarily be in our code, but we definitely want to make sure that we reach out to those other areas to see how, what they need in order to handle the development.
Okay. I just would hope that would also be considered, because I did provide to the, I sent a copy to the chair, the plan commission, a carbon copy to town council with some resources and some information about fiscal impact. So, I would just ask, at least for that consideration, as only one member and one opinion.
We will be having further discussions with the town attorney, so.
Thank you. And then the Southwest Quadrant Access Management Plan, any movement or what, how's that process going?
I don't believe it's progressing very, very much at this point. Right now, it's with the individual discussions with the property owners, and I don't believe that we've been able to set up those meetings to further that discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you for your thorough report.
Thank you.
All right, Director Stahl, come on down. Any questions for Director Stahl based on this report?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Director Stahl. Don't make me feel bad. So, I did review your point. I'm going to tell you, you need a master's degree to understand that stuff. But my one question is, with all of the water that was running off of Pine Grove onto Charles Street, have we put any remediations in? We had a bunch of rain this last couple of weeks, and have they been able to remediate that problem?
They have been trying to put in some additional paving down there. Of course, the, the real challenge with Pine Grove right now is that the surface level of paving, the two inches of surface, isn't in. And so, what's happening now is that it's not, the water is going down and ponding in front of Pine Grove, and it's not running into the storm drains that are there in place. It is two parts about it. It's winter time, and I think we all know that the asphalt plants are normally shut down. Their asphalt contractor is Reliable Contracting, who is still trying to get some paving. They had the asphalt machines there, but we like to see if I'm going to allow paving, especially surface asphalt, we want to see 40 degrees and rising. And I want to make sure that we have a minimum temperature of 275 degrees on asphalt. And the bottom line is, when you're hauling it out of Wah Chapel up above Crofton, it's, it's very difficult to maintain those kind of temperatures in this weather. So, they've certainly had some issues with the fact that it's winter time. But, you know, they're certainly aware of challenges there, and it's, you know, and until they get the asphalt, the final coat of asphalt in there, it's going to be problematic. I will tell you that Pine Grove the other day did get their first transformer in last Friday, and so they did get power to the first five houses in there. So, the model homes do have power now, which was one of the real challenges with that. So, I'm not sure yet. I haven't, we, we don't have our meetings with them until Thursdays, and it's next week. You know, it's going to be interesting to see how, you know, things get marketing and how work and how many sales they'll have, and whether or not they'll get enough transformers to even move forward into some of the other homes. There's currently, I think, Janine 48, those are the first that have been issued. It's more than that. Because there's, there's actually 20. There's seven, five, 17, and so there's, there's about 29, I believe, that are actually under construction right now back there. So, they were trying to pave the other day, and we just didn't move forward with the proof roll to allow them to pave, because we felt that it was too wet.
Okay. And my last question is, I was surprised to see that we're still doing the Mueller updates.
Oh, it's, it's an ongoing saga. I mean, it's just a challenge. We're constantly in there trying to, I believe, off the top of my head, that we're still right around 91% on the, on the Mueller system right now as to actual reading. We want to be at 98%. And we're constantly going in and adjusting and trying to change out meters. We, of course, have had a lack of meters to even be able to update. But we did finally, last week, we got 500 new meters in, so that was a positive step, because we were very, very, very short, and with all this growth, it has been something. But it's, it's a consistent challenge, I have to tell you.
So, the growth is, is the problem?
No, we were just very short. We, we had stopped doing meter upgrades because we were so short of, of, of meters.
Okay.
That we had stopped doing the upgrades, because we were using them for the new homes that were being purchased. And so, we didn't want to use up our, the meters that we had in stock unless we absolutely had to, because we were so short.
So, the meter upgrades is not a Mueller issue. It's our growth issue and a lack of meter issue?
We were having the problem of getting meters. There's, I can tell you a number of factors. One, communications with the meters have been a consistent problem. Working with Mueller in and of itself to get them to reprogram the meters when we switch them out has been an issue. Getting the generation four meters and putting the generation four meters in and switching them out has been a problem. There, there have been just numerous, numerous issues with it that have led to this, and we have, have tried desperately to correct it, and it's, it's just been an ongoing challenge for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Trolinger?
Yes, thank you. So, this is just a follow-up. I'm Matt Trolinger, Ward two. Follow-up on Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward's question about the Mueller update. I think you kind of answered it, Director Stahl, but I know previously we talked about the concern that some of our lack of upgrades may be due to either a vacant home or landlords not responding versus residents that we're overlooking it. It looks like, according to the completion rate put on the PowerPoint slide, that we're at about 166 that are remaining potentially. Do we have any idea as to whether that, at this point, is just, like you said, lack of having the meters or lack of response from either landlords or vacant? You know, what that breakdown might be?
I don't have that right off the top of my head, but I can certainly provide that to the council in the next few days. I can certainly get that information and pass that back to the council. I, I just don't have that breakdown in front of me. I apologize.
That's okay. I just was, I, you know, the following bullet point there is talking about, what we had talked about long ago, about temporary cutoffs. And so, I think Councilwoman Bryant Ward's questions are helpful, because if we're considering these items, knowing that the town didn't have the meters, even put them in for some of these folks, that should probably be a factor there. So, thanks for letting us know about them.
The, the big thing is, we do have to, and, and we've been talking about this, and I know the council didn't want to go forward with, you know, cutoffs due to some of the COVID issues and things like that, and we did not want to move forward with respect to cutoffs to get people to conform. But we do have a certain percentage of that final number that, you know, we just don't have a choice but to say, we're going to cut you off, and we really need the support in that. I wanted to make sure that before I came back to you and said, we'd like to start, you know, sending out notices of cutoff, that we have all of the parts in stock and that we know that we're going to be able to fix the problem. And clearly, you know, supply chain has been an issue for us on all projects. But the challenge has been that we still need to have compliance, and the way we're going to get final compliance out of a lot of these facilities is to literally cut them off. And it, it's just something that we have to do.
Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. So, that would need town council approval to authorize shut-offs.
I, I think that because of the political nature of that, that we would at least like to come in and inform council that we're going to do that, so that it's not something that comes back to bite us. I certainly think that, you know, before we get to that point, that we want to tell you this is the direction that we suggest, and that if there's, you know, opposition to it, then we'll work on other mechanisms in this situation. But if we're going to do that, then I need to verify for myself that I'm ready to go with it, and that we're going to offer that as the hammer. And, you know, I, I just think that that's the right way to go, and because of, as I say, because of supply chain issues and some of the other issues, we weren't there. But I think we're very close to that at this point, and I believe, you know, way before spring, we will be moving forward. And one of the, you know, I'm assuming that one of the meetings next month, that we'll come to you and say, you know, we're going to have to do this on some of these accounts, and I'll give you the breakdown of what they are and how many that we're going to need to send those kind of letters to.
And you will be guaranteed that we have the equipment in order to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then just one final question, if I may, madam. Honestly, we have a new governor, new administration. Do you anticipate moving forward with the gap request with MDE?
As most of you know, we attended the hearing today for-
No, I wasn't aware of that.
The mayor and town manager and I attended a gap hearing for Charles County today.
So, that's their request, not ours?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the town had requested of MDE to make part of their gap request or their groundwater appropriation permit, that part of the permit would be that they would have to have a water agreement with the town of La Plata. MDE told us that they weren't going to do that, that they were just going to issue them the gap, and that they were not going to make it contingent on them signing an agreement with La Plata. Personally, I was extremely disappointed. The town carried forward with its agreement that we wouldn't go file for additional appropriation in the Patapsco Aquifer. And the reason that we said that was because we're working with them to try and develop a joint water sharing arrangement. And so, we would, we agreed we would support their application. And then, when the draft permit came out, and it had nothing in there about that they had to sign a water sharing arrangement, of course, I called MDE. And I was told that at the highest levels at MDE, that they were told not to put that in the permit. So, of course, we've had discussions behind the scenes and said, you know, we need to offer testimony that that was important, and that we were doing this. You know, we've been negotiating with the county, you know, to be honest, for 10 years, to come up with a water sharing arrangement. We have agreed to all of the capital projects, all of the capital terms. We have agreed to basically everything in the agreement, except how we fairly share water. And the county's philosophy has been, we're going to make La Plata purchase all of its water at WSSC rates. Totally unfair. And, but as I've said before, and what happened with this, if they're getting all of the water that they need, if the state's giving them additional water in the other aquifers, and they're able to buy water from these, from WSSC, in the county's mind, why should they even enter into an agreement? Until the state that actually owns the water says, we want you to share it fairly, we're not going to get there, and it's tough.
So, where was Cornerstone in this discussion?
I don't, I honestly don't know. I haven't been part of the discussions with Cornerstone, so I could turn to the town manager, to the mayor. I don't honestly know.
Yeah, we've met with Cornerstone, obviously, throughout the, and we even met with the acting secretary, just bringing her up to speed. I think it was last week or the week prior, since she will be the one briefing the new cabinet secretary once she's in place. So, it's ongoing conversations specifically to this permit. The Cornerstone has not been involved, because that's the county's permit process. But it's something that we could definitely entertain in the future, pointing that out when we have our discussions with MDE, because as was clearly stated in many of the communications today, is the, the state owns the water, and we need to work with them to have an equitable distribution of that water, not just to the county, but to the municipalities. distribution of that water, not just to the county, but to the municipalities within Charles County. So that was the approach we took today, trying to look at the appropriations through all the aquifers and how it can be done in the most equitable way possible for all the residents of Charles County.
I will point out that, and I'd be happy to share the chart with the council in all of the things that we track. It is interesting to point out that over the past 10 years, the town of La Plata's groundwater appropriation, and I'm saying the actual use of water, has not increased. It has actually declined. And so our water use in town, and I believe it's due to a number of factors. I mean, water conservation, clearly water conserving fixtures in homes, our tiered billing system. There are a number of factors that I think have gone into this, that even though our population over the past 10 to 15 years has gone up by 10% roughly. I mean, you know, based on 2010 census to the 20, I'm excuse you, 2020, 2010 census to the 2020 census, we've increased population by roughly 10%. Our water use has actually remained flat. This past year, off the top of my head, we went from 312 million gallons of water use to 318 million gallons of water use for the entire year. And so we just went up just a fraction in 2022. But compare that to even like 2014, we dropped by, I think, 27 or 28 million gallons. So we, we've, you know, we, we go up or down a little bit every year, but when you look at it linearly, the line is absolutely flat and has actually decreased slightly over the, over that period of time. And it's, it's been for, you know, all of those factors. So as much as I was very angry with MDE when they denied us the water appropriation permit back in 2009 because they said, when we applied for it up at, well, 11, they said to us, you don't need the water. We'll discuss this with you when you need the water. Be honest, over the 12 years after that, which is the length of the groundwater appropriation permit, we honestly didn't have any increase in any need for water. Do I think with the growth that we're seeing and the projected growth that we're seeing that we're going to need? Yes, I do. I absolutely think that in the near future, we will be needing water. But when you look at the actuality of where we've come over the last 10 to 15 years, we're, we really haven't increased dramatically at all. So just to point that out.
So what do we do next?
I think we need to discuss our options. Clearly, in today's hearing, they pointed out that one of the options that we would have is that we could file the, the appeal for the decision today was to Circuit Court in Charles County. So the appeal for that process, if it came out and they didn't modify it, we would clearly have the, the legal opinion. I think there's another opinion that we could deal with the, the new administration and see where we go with the new administration and try that process again now that things have changed. So I think we have to strategize, you know, behind the scenes and see what our options are. There, there are clearly options out there for us. And one of the options is we file an additional appropriation in the lower Patapsco and force the state to either approve or deny that. And of course, if they follow their principle in that situation, they would have to take from the county to give to the town. You know, of which I'm sure the county would come to our hearing and testify against us in that situation as we did today. And, and we really didn't testify against them. We just said that we would, we believe that it's in everyone's best interest to make a condition of this permit that there be a, a water sharing arrangement.
So will you and town manager come up with a strategy to bring back to us? Because I mean, it makes no sense to wait until you are in need of something, not understanding how the process will work if that need will be met. We're projecting a need. We can show them the data. In my mind, you wouldn't wait until you're out of water to ask for it. That's just not logical to me. I mean, there's a process, I'm assuming, with getting this done. So I'm, I'm not understanding when you are in need, come back to us. I think that, you know, we should have a strategy and I think we should keep pushing forward. I'm not sure what Cornerstone's strategy is or what their plan is, but I think we can't wait. You know, this, this discussion is going, you said, you told me when I started, you know, what the proposal was, what the conversation was. Obviously, that was not a gentleman's agreement because nobody honored it. So now we need no more agreements. We need to have something in writing and something clearly defined so that we have a process to move forward. So I would love to hear the strategy.
Should we have some kind of a work session that we sit down sooner than later than start like ASAP?
There has been a, a strategy going on with, you all meet with the county and it's been going back and forth. MDE has been involved. So it may not seem like there is a strategy in place. They have made a lot of concessions. MDE, when they had a conversation, when the acting secretary was on last week, they're well aware that there is a, an agreement out there that is, MDE actually is the one that, that came up with the agreement. It is just getting the county to agree to that. So it is right now, the cog in the wheel is higher up. Staff to staff has worked things out beautifully and they just have, moving forward, there are incremental steps that need to be taken. So the next step, from what I understand, is another conversation with now the new secretary of MDE to apprise her of what has been going on and to seek her guidance. So they have, from what I've been briefed on, moving forward, there is no, there's not been a stall on that. Sorry, no pun intended.
What he just said to us. I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but he, he just said that we need to create a strategy. Right now, they have said no. So, and, and I'm aware of the conversations that they were having with, with county staff, but those, those conversations haven't yielded us anything. Those conversations have been going on for months. If I'm not mistaken, I remember when they shared that with us. So you stated that you need to come up with a strategy and that's what I'm capitalizing on. I would like to see a strategy. You know, yeah, they're worth conversations, but nothing has happened for us.
No, I think one of the issues, not issue, but I think we have an opportunity. We have sort of parallel tracks running.
Okay.
We have what Director Stahl is doing with the county and then we have the cornerstone sort of approach. And I think that we need to make sure that they align and that they are sort of part of a comprehensive strategy between the two groups. I don't know that it's in our best interest to meet in a, you know, an open session to talk about our strategy and addressing the county, but it's something that I think we have a call. I don't know if it's, I think it's next Thursday or it's this Thursday. So we can sort of start that alignment as soon as two days.
So tell me again, what is Cornerstone's strategy? I've heard what Director Stahl has shared.
Of course, they're lobbyists. So I don't want to get into their strategy, but they're working, you know, one of the things we were up against and they were very cognizant of is that election was going to happen and the election did happen at the state level. So I think it was just last week that Governor announced his secretary of the environment. So now we know who we're going to be, you know, talking to, so to speak. So that, that's a step in the, in the right, and of course, the county had an election as well. And there's, you know, they're, they're trying to find their feet as an organization after the election. So we're, we're hopeful that, you know, things can come to fruition. It's just, you know, we've been hopeful for a long time and we're getting frustrated.
Yes.
So the frustration is, the frustration that you feel is also felt by the staff and, you know, we want to see this brought to a conclusion. And as you'll see later in our agenda, it will be brought to light that we need the water.
Yep.
And so that, that is definitely the, the primary factor that is out there that's going to impact a lot, a lot of other decisions, future decisions this council will have to make. But that is one of the, you know, areas that, as Bobby said, we've been working on for over 10 years. More specifically, I went back to my emails and it was December of 2019, we started these negotiations specifically with the county. And, you know, we, we hope to obviously come to some sort of compromise within that time. I think we have a good, we've put forward a good proposal. It's just a matter of getting the stars to align to get it to the, I guess, the Board of County Commissioners to sign off on it at this point. So, and you know, that, that is one of the challenges we're up against.
So looking forward to you aligning the two strategies. Okay.
All right. My comment to you is the new pump station, the painting on the pump station right there at Will Lane, that looks awesome. That's a great entrance to Pine Grove. And then also very excited that tomorrow the bids will be, I guess, reviewed for the painting of the Firehouse Museum. So that is moving along as well. So.
We've actually received them already. We're just going to go over the actual bids tomorrow.
And, and will you award someone tomorrow?
We will probably come to a decision whether or not we make the actual award tomorrow. We'll get with the town manager and make the determination in that standpoint. But yes, we will be going over the bids.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate, appreciate your report. All right. Next on the agenda is Director Fitz. Any questions?
Hello, Mayor. Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Thank you for the report again, comprehensive. Just, probably true what they asked, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Any timeline, do you think, for the process to update the town website?
Altogether?
Yes.
Once the contract is awarded, about seven months for a rollout.
So that's after someone's quote selected and then, okay. And, and I'm not going to, I wouldn't hold you to it, just trying to get an idea where we are.
Yeah, we, we actually have, we've reviewed all the bids and we-
Five, right?
Yes. And sent those forward to the, our, our recommendation to the ARPA consultant and he's reviewing those as well to make sure that we're doing all the paperwork right.
Sure.
Once that's all settled, we'll notify the vendor and then it'd be about seven month rollout from the very beginnings of picking our, our website and how it looks to opening it up to the, the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Fitz, I just have a couple of questions. January 19th, Kent Avenue Development Discussion. Is that something you can share with us?
That's private property. They were looking to develop a privately owned lot on Kent Avenue. Looking for some possibilities as far as how that property could be utilized, how it could be best utilized. And in fact, they were very interested in serving the interests of the town to do that. So we met with Director Harrington, the mayor and I met with the property owner and we went over the, the zoning availability and, and what they could do with the property.
The second one, the annual calendar for the community cleanups. You've established that. Is that something you'll share?
Definitely. We'll publish it on the webpage and through social media.
Okay. And Bird City, Maryland, meeting with volunteer for development of local Bird City recognition program.
Yes, Chris Wagner, who was formerly on the Historic Preservation Commission, has come back looking to become involved, more involved in the Keep a Plate of Beautiful efforts and especially Bird City. He has a strong background in science and horticulture. So he's teaming up with Lynn Wheeler, who's the chair of the Bird City, Maryland effort. And they're developing a signage program to encourage our residents and businesses to promote bird friendly practices.
Need to get some tags for Bird City so that we can get some revenue for a tag.
Yes, that would be fantastic also.
Okay, thank you.
All the birds.
Jim, do you have any questions?
I just have, they answered a lot of them. Could you elaborate on the two PIA's we received?
Yes, I believe one of them went to planning and one of them went to finance. They were both simple P, Public Information Act requests. The first one was closed. The second one, I believe, is going to close this week, well within the 10 days required.
Thank you. And then I love to see that you had a meeting to explore Bee City, becoming a bee city. I know that that has been something that has been looked at for many, many years and hopefully the individuals, maybe, that wasn't, that, sorry, that came off wrong. The individuals will be able to take this to the next level because it would be nice to be a bee city as well. And I know that there's been a lot of interest, but no one has wanted to really step up. So maybe a lot of hands will make the workload a little bit lighter. So thank you for pursuing that. Much appreciated. Any other questions? Thank you, Ben. Oh, just one more. I'm sorry.
The Christ Church Historical Marker.
Yes, I believe they've located where they wanted to mount it. It hasn't been installed yet. And Public Works is working on a stand to install it on.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is matters of council discussion, the repeal of chapter 105 fire prevention. Director Harrington?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So for the chapter 105, in 2018, we updated the Towns Code to the 2018 International Building Code. We did not update our fire code, which was chapter 105 at that time. And since we proceeded forward with permit review with Plan Check, we've also utilized the services of the Office of the State Fire Marshal to do our, our fire reviews for commercial permits. So after discussing with the town attorney and town manager, it was determined that the chapter was not necessary since the fire code is referenced within the International Building Code and that the state Fire Marshal's office utilizes their current copy of whatever they're using. So at this point, they're under the 2021 NFPA 1 and NFPA 101 codes. And so even if we had the 2018 code for the fire code, it'd be out of date anyway. So we simply defer to the Office of the State Fire Marshal for any commercial reviews. And then there is some fire elements to the commercial and residential under the building code, which is already addressed under chapter 75. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, again, Ward four. Thank you again. Just, you probably already did this, but just, so when this is repealed, do we have to notify developers or other folks that's going to be-
No, it'll be updated on the town's website. And we've, as we've been going through, this is how it was brought to my attention, that everyone kept saying, you know, your fire code is still since 2012.
Okay.
And it's like, oh, yeah, no, we need to, we need to get that taken care of.
Thank you.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I just want to commend you, Director Harrington, with working with the town attorney for simplifying the code in the process. Anytime we are, you know, either duplicative or sending two different messages, there's no, you know, there's not understanding or expectations being laid down. So I really appreciate any opportunity that there is to simplify things as it relates to our code. So thank you for putting in the work.
You're welcome.
So Councilman Challenger, is your recommendation to move forward to make this legislation?
It is, it is.
All right, Councilman Golds.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward. We have a consensus. We will be seeing this later on tonight. Thank you. Brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is a fee increase for Plan Check and Farmer's Market seasonal rate. And I guess it's a team effort. Both of you.
Okay. Yes. Oh, okay. Oh, and no glasses. Oh, no. Thank you. Anyway. Yes, Madam Mayor, Council, we are requesting the farmer's market fees, the seasonal Saturday fees be increased from 105 per season to 120 per season. This wasn't in my request. This was the result of a meeting of the market committee. So the vendors and community representatives voted on this and recommend that we raise the fees. They haven't been raised, I believe, since 2017. And they felt like this was a reasonable amount to promote- And they felt like this was a reasonable amount to promote greater participation and attendance at the Farmer's Market.
Director Phipps, how many Saturdays will this include?
Thirty-two to 35, depending on how the calendar works out.
Okay, so it's 120 for the season?
For the entire season.
Okay, for 35 Saturdays.
Yes, it's very reasonable, especially if you consider our local, not competitors, but another venue that's available is the Pop Up and Grow Market up in Waldorf, and they're charging between 100 and 125 per weekend. We work out to quite a bit less. So in terms of supporting the micro businesses and promoting it, the Farmer's Market as a small business incubator, our rates are very, very reasonable.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Good question. The Secretary of Everything, emails are very small and pretty. Have you got any negative feedback?
Not yet. We haven't actually released this. We, part of this ordinance is approving the fee increase. So, yeah, we do expect some feed, some negative feedback. But like I said, the rate hasn't been raised since 2017. Meanwhile, inflation is through the roof. It is, it's very.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So was there rationale from going from the 105 to the 120? I mean, does the $15 allow something different?
It was an acceptable margin and with the increase in inflation, they feel okay with that. I mean, everything costs more now, including marketing and marketing materials as far as getting new signs. We have to pay for that. We are adding more market managers, so trying to offset some of those prices. But again, the vendors felt like it was a reasonable amount compared to other venues that they've been at. A lot of them go to multiple markets.
Right, not questioning the amount because I agree with you, $120 for 35 Saturdays, when you break it down, it's nothing. I'm just trying to figure out if that will accomplish what you needed to accomplish. Was there a rationale in determining the 120?
No, not, not really, except that now I don't have to make change.
Councilman Challenger.
Yes, so kind of along the same lines as Councilwoman Bryant Ward. But is, is the thought that $15 increase will increase the buy-in from potential vendors of saying, I've invested 120 instead of 105, so I'm going to be there more often? I saw here that we were looking for, I guess, raising standards on maybe some new potential vendors. How does this accomplish that?
The 105 is extremely reasonable. 120 is still very reasonable. 105 was extremely reasonable. So it was very easy to walk away from a weekend here, a weekend there, when you're only really paying about $3 a day. So 120 was a reasonable fee overall, especially considering the vendors are going to be paying this out at the beginning of the season before they've brought in any revenue. So they have a lot of outlays. 120 was, was thought to increase commitment, but not overly burden the vendors.
And then how many vendors do we typically have? And I know I should know, I apologize for not knowing. But just looking at the cumulative effect of, you know, increasing, you know, maybe the help of that $15 additional buy-in.
Depending on the weekend, between 24 and 35 vendors.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Challenger, are you okay to move this forward?
Did you want to hear some more about fees from Plan Check?
Because they're tied together. Oh, burst in my bubble. Come on. Hang on, Councilman Challenger.
Yes, you, hello again.
Hello.
So I went through Plan Check, sent me not only an updated contract because we hadn't updated our contract in quite a while, but they also sent me updated inspection fees and building permit fees. And as they stated, that the fiscal environment in which we operate has radically changed since the previous contract. Inflation rates are at a 40-year high, significantly impacting operational expenses, including fuel, insurance, salaries required to retain qualified and certified employees, et cetera. And for the inspection and review services rendered, they are proposing a fee increase. And I honestly cannot remember the last time that their fees increased either. It was probably around 2016, 2017. We generally update our fees by the CPI each year, but they have not done a comprehensive update. So you will notice that the inspection fees and some of the building permit fees have changed quite significantly from where we were at. You know, there were certain footing inspections that were $38. Now that's $125. And again, you have to look at that from the prospect of, you know, this was, those fees were set in 2016 and now we're here in 2023. And fees are definitely a lot higher. I also went through and I reorganized the fee schedule to try to make things make a little bit more sense for people. Major facility fees, utility fees, anything that requires a permit through the planning department, I put under the permit section. And then we also looked at the code enforcement municipal infractions area. And I'll note that we had, most of the fees remain the same. We did go through to some of the other chapters, including Chapter 108, the subdivision ordinance, the zoning ordinance, and a few of the others that have been generally problematic for my staff. And we did increase those fees as, as needed. In essence, when our code, and this will prompt code changes as well, we're already looking at certain chapters, including the health and sanitation. But right now, the town code states that we shall issue citations or not, you know, violations on a daily basis. Well, when you take that to court, the judge finds that that's excessive. So we don't issue fines on a daily basis. We generally do weekly, biweekly, those types of things. So when you're issuing someone a $25 fine, they're just going to keep paying it and we're not getting anywhere. So we look to increase the fees to be kind of equitable with the type of offense that's cited in the code to make that a little bit overall generally more coalescent to what we're working on. Is there any questions specifically?
Just a clarification, the reason this is coming up now until, instead of our budget, which is in a couple of months, is because they are raising their fees immediately.
That is correct. So it's also tied to, they had their, they got their contract with Charles County prior to the town. We tied on with that kind of contract overall. And so when they do their fee schedules, they're looking at the calendar year. They're not looking at a fiscal year like we do. So she had sent these to me and said, we're kind of behind schedule, but we'd like to get these in place by February 1st. And I was like, we need to do an emergency ordinance then. So, but yes, the, all of the inspection fees that are in here are their fees. I did not increase them by CPI. I did not change them. That is what their inspection fees are. Most of the building permit fees, I tried to keep consistent with what we already had because their fees didn't increase that much. I only adjusted where it was necessary and where it made sense. So for decks and certain things, we had a per square foot fee and an application fee. Whereas now it's, it's either, you know, buy square footage or a minimum fee of $120, whatever it is. So we just adjusted it in those sense.
Thank you for that clarification. Council, any questions on this?
Just two quick questions. That's what Jake's word for it. Thank you for reorganizing the fee schedule because it's not easy to read. Thank you for doing that. So does this amendment affect code enforcement fines or doesn't?
It does. So the, the last section of the fee schedule, which is 101-7, I want to say.
Okay.
101-7 Municipal Infractions.
Okay.
I went through and reorganized it by chapter and they're in, you know, numerical order, so we can follow it a little bit better.
Got it.
And I also noted that in our fee schedule, they had Chapter 186.16 as one fee, dot 186.16.c as the same fee. So I just condensed it all, combined it all.
Okay.
And we were also missing a couple of chapters, including Chapter 108, Chapter 167, and Chapter 181, which I know we're going to be looking at soon. So I wanted to make sure that those were in the code or in the fee schedule.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, now Councilman Challenger, you ready to move this forward?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I support both measures here.
Thank you, Councilman Golds. As long as I.
You go.
We have a consensus. We will be moving that forward. And Mr. Town Clerk, I am so sorry, but I did not see on the agenda when we did amend the agenda that 5.3, correct me if I'm wrong, should say emergency ordinance and not just ordinance. Is that? No, nope, never mind. You were right. I'm reading it, putting the glasses on. All right, it says ethics. I thought they were going to be separate. All right, so that will bring us down to our legislation. Mr. Town Clerk.
Madam Mayor, I believe we have 4.3 on our agenda, development capacity analysis.
Oh, that big one. All right, these glasses apparently are not working today. All right, Director Harrington, this is your show today, isn't it?
I think this is the most I've been up and talking in front of you guys. So hello again. So as we've been discussing over the past several months, we were looking to create a development capacity analysis that looked at our water capacity, sewer capacity, and kind of just tied school seats and the proposed development altogether. So I created a monster spreadsheet, which is a little difficult to just print out on one sheet. But I broke it out into sections of development that we have approved. It has an approved site plan. It has an approved building permit. I, it has anything with a preliminary plat approval, anything in development review, and then conceptual development. So as, as we see in the, in the spreadsheet, we are seeing an increase for the demand and development review. Some of these projects have been in for decades. Others are brand new infill developments that we're just starting to get in. As stated in our 2020 Water and Wastewater Capacity Management Plans, we knew that water and sewer would become a challenge at some point. We just didn't know when. So we are assuming the following based on what we're seeing. That there is enough water and sewer capacity to handle developments that have received final approval, which is site plan approval, final plat approval, approval or building permits issued. We do not have enough water and sewer capacity to handle all of the developments that are currently in our review process. Based upon the end of the year numbers by our Public Works Department, the town has approximately 375,000 gallons per day of water capacity remaining and 413,000 gallons per day of sewer capacity remaining. After you subtract out all of the water demand and sewer demand for each of the developments, we have approximately, for anything that's approved at this point and is active development or active approval, we'll have 198,460 gallons per day of water capacity and 236,460 gallons per day of sewer capacity remaining. So projects that have received preliminary plat approval in total would require 324,000 gallons per day of water and sewer capacity demand. And obviously, if you take 198,460 and subtract 324, we're in the negative range. So I do want to note that while we're in the water appropriation discussion, we're trying to get additional appropriations. The town does have full control over our wastewater treatment plant. Obviously, we do need permits through MDE, but I know that we've made those steps and we're making progress right now on upgrading the wastewater treatment plant. And I know that per the wastewater and water capacity management plans that we have, that we have in the plan to upgrade to a 2 million gallons per day, yeah, 2 million gallons per day capacity for the wastewater treatment plant with a long-term range even higher than that, I believe. And there's a phased approach. As we need it, we will build it. So I know that if you have more questions on that, Bobby's definitely the guy to answer those. But I, I felt that this was very important to bring forward now because I am getting more and more development applications every day and I can't keep up. So as we're starting to see what we're getting in, we're getting very close to saying, you know what? How are we going to appropriate water and sewer? That's going to be part of the APFO conversation. And again, that's why we're tying in operations, our town attorney and others to kind of look at how we need to frame our water and sewer sections as far as approvals, how we tie actual water allocation. Is it at the major facility fee? Are we doing it at, you know, the final plat approval? You know, how are we going to do this? But it is good to see in kind of one place, all the development that's proposed, approved and conceptual, and where we're going to start running into issues.
Director Harrington, with the approved development, we have blessed them. We have said, you can move forward.
Yes.
And legally, since we have done that, we must move forward. Now, if, what if, if one doesn't become viable? And I know that there's a question of one that may not, may not have the funding to move forward. They keep pushing it back and back. Will, will that just, obviously that'll alleviate many EDUs, but that opens up a space for the next person.
It does. So we do have, for anything that is a site plan approval, we do have specific expiration dates that are in the zoning code. So major site plans, I think are two years, minor sub, minor site plans are one year. Can't remember off the top of my head, but we do have expiration dates for those. So if you do not proceed to a certain level within a certain amount of time, then your project would become expired and you'd have to reapply. For subdivisions, that's a little bit more difficult. So the preliminary plat, if you have just preliminary plat approval, then you are not fully vested. Your preliminary plat is approved for one year unless an extension is approved by the Planning Commission. And I believe there's only like two extensions that you can ask for after that. So if you have just preliminary plat approval, there are also expiration dates in place that you'd get moved from the list. Final plats are a little bit more difficult. We do not have any expiration dates set in our code for a final plat. If you have a final plat recorded, you are vested. So that, that's the one that's a little bit difficult. We have had our subdivision ordinance on our list of to-dos for a while. I had started to draft it, I think, back in 2018, 2017, and it's just been difficult to proceed forward with getting all of that because that's a very large chapter and a heavy, heavy information chapter. So everything else does have some type of expiration date. There's also expiration dates for anything with a grading permit that if you haven't been doing active construction with a certain time period, then your grading permit would expire. So that's something that we're going to have to keep an eye on as everything keeps moving forward.
I do have more questions, but I will open it up to council. Any questions for Director Harrington on this development capacity, besides awesome job on this? That's incredible. Thank you. You have really made it easy for me to read, so I'm sure others may fall in that category. I speak for others. All right, any questions for Director Harrington? Go ahead.
Councilman Jenkins, again, I would echo the mayor's comments. Thank you and Director Stahl for collaborating. That's enough said, but that's really important. Thank you very much for doing that. So what's next? I mean, how, how will this be used? I mean, can it be used to link to the APF discussion?
Absolutely.
Can it be used by the Planning Commission to, when they review projects, to either approve or approve the conditions or deny?
That is definitely part of the review process. So when staff, as we're reviewing plans and when we get site plans in, preliminary plats even, we are utilizing McCrone and Bobby's to look at these and we're looking at the water and sewer demand. And if there's a project that comes forward and we say, you know, we don't have enough water and sewer for that, we're not going to proceed forward to the Planning Commission. We only take it to the Planning Commission when we as staff are confident to say, we recommend approval. Or, you know, if the applicant is saying, we still want to move it forward anyway and say that, you know, leave it up to the Planning Commission, then I'll take it. But our recommendation is going to say, we don't think that there's enough water and sewer for this. We don't recommend approval. So either way, that information would be subject to the Planning Commission approval.
And does this include commercial development?
Yes.
It does, okay. That's all my questions for now. Thank, again, thank you very much for the effort. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Harrington, it's my understanding that the developments that are already currently in place, they are aware that by the time they get to a certain phase, if we don't have water, they can't build.
That is part of why we did this. So we, we knew, like I said, we knew for a while that we had a certain number of allocations, a certain number of appropriations. And we had, you know, the kind of wastewater and water capacity management plans that kind of said, here's about what we have, here's what we've used. But we hadn't really looked at each project, the number of dwelling units or the type of use and compared it to the state flow factor to say, this is about how much water and sewer demand that this project is going to create. So that is why we did this. So that way we can reach out and say, you know what, we're reaching a problem. And we can kind of talk about that ahead of time.
And I know Director Stahl had presented something similar last year. And so I was under the impression that that had been communicated to developments who had come forward with that understanding. to developments who had come forward with that understanding.
We have the, we've had the discussions that water and sewer are not a guarantee, you know, as you're going through the development review process. I think this makes it a little bit more clear that, you know, this is what we have. So I think it's just that kind of clarification level.
I would say to Councilman Jenkins' comment, you know, it's one of the things we have to do is we're developing our adequate public facility ordinance is to make sure that it does align with the practices that are within our existing town code. And maybe it's an opportunity to look at best practices. And the code may not be the best practice, but we'll need to sort of conjoin those two and align those so that we don't have a contradiction in our code. And sort of gives us a time to freshen up, if you will. One of the things that I'm sure Bobby will have said, you know, for the longest time, it wasn't an issue as far as water. And one of the reasons we're pressed now is because, what, up until last year, we had never done over 100 new housing starts. So we thought we had, what Bobby, 10 years conservatively? And then, you know, one developer can change the game. And that's what's happened. And that's what's sort of is pushing us to sort of really need the water sharing agreement with the county so that we do not stymie the process, but continue to grow in the manner that we as a town and as a community have seen as where we want to go. You know, the Heritage Green, now Pine Grove project has been on the books since the 80s.
Yeah.
Early 80s. So, you know, it's not something that's new. It's not something that... But at the same time, the sort of volume that they're talking of doing has put us sort of in a position where we need to, we need to act.
Along with the other developments that are in the pipeline, that's where we're kind of like, eh, you know, if we need to start preparing, this is what we need to look at. But we did issue 112 building permits in 2021. That did close out some phases of Hawthorne Green, the senior living community, certain phases of Steeplechase and AgroCopia. And so in 2022, we did issue 97 new residential building permits. And again, that's partially because some of these other developments, phases of developments had kind of closed out, completed. But I will say that of those 97, 48 were directly from Pine Grove Neighborhood K. And those just started in September. They're submitting about 10 building permits a week. So already in January, we've issued 10 and we already have 20 more.
So a question for you on the, I totally understand the approved. The preliminary, we're going, they're going through, they're getting their paperwork in. They've already said, here are the plats, but we haven't approved them. We've looked at them and we've said, they look good, meaning the Royal U, not us. But the development in review, again, all of these developers were made aware of the water appropriation dilemma that could arise, that may arise. We're hoping it doesn't, that we'll be able to make an agreement with the county. So the development in review and the conceptual ideas, is that something that you can put a pause on? And I'm talking from a legal point. I know you're not a lawyer, but you've been advised by our attorney. Can you put a pause on that? Or since they have been annexed in and they have been moving forward, do we need to move forward?
We need to make sure that we're making an effort to provide adequate public facilities. This is why we're doing that ordinance in the first place. But anything that's in development review, if you do not have water and sewer allocations, you cannot issue approval. I cannot issue a final plat and recommend that it get recorded if there isn't a water and sewer allocation. Director Stahl actually has to sign a letter every time that we get a final plat in and send it over to, for recordation. The Health Department has to sign off on it. And they need a letter stating that we have reviewed this. We have determined that there is adequate water and sewer and that it can be recorded. Otherwise, they won't sign it and it's not getting recorded. So if you do not have water and sewer capacity available, you're not issuing any approvals. And as we have it right now, it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So just because somebody has preliminary plat approval, if they don't move forward with their engineering or their final plat and somebody down in development review submits their major site plan, gets approval, they're going up ahead of them. So it's, as I said, right now, we don't have a set allocation process besides first-come, first-served. So it's as these developments come in and go through the process, we're having to determine how much water and capacity we have on each project and then which order they come in.
Yeah, for example, you know, we have, we could end up with a situation where someone has a final plat approved, but they do not go to construction. So they're taking water entitlements, if you will. And so we may need to write into our adequate public facility that they have a five-year window or two, three-year window that if they do not go to construction or they do not go to occupancy, whichever, you know, like I say, best practice is, then they could potentially lose those entitlements. Because it's similar to what the county does with school seats, most adequate public facility ordinances. Of course, I'm more familiar with the Commonwealth of Virginia where you have, if someone proposes a development, you as a community have five years to address and mitigate sort of those adequate public facilities. And if you do not do that in five years, then the plan's approved and they can move forward. So it does put you on a shot clock, so to speak. So, you know, those are all the things that we are investigating as part of this APFO that we're going to hope to have a very tight, good product in the end. Just a, it's a lot.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes, first off, again, echo everyone here in saying thank you for laying this out. Easy to track. It's hard to imagine how we could function without having these tools, right? With the demand of everyone wanting to be here, the plat is great. But you answered one of my questions about first in, first in time, first in line as it related to this list. Because as we look at it and as the resources are scarce, my question was, you know, most of these on the list, with the exception of a couple in each section, actually, I don't think any preliminary approval involves commercial development. But mostly every section has primarily residential. As it relates to residential versus commercial development on this list, does any weighing go into comprehensive plan as far as what we look at developing downtown? So for example, I know we're not talking about, you know, a restaurant changing hands that's already got the resources and allocations, but this is for new builds. So essentially, no new commercial build would be able to go forward. If they're not on this list, unless we get a ton more water, is how I'm reading it. Is that fair or am I jumping too far ahead?
That will have to clarify within the APFO. So our comprehensive plan is a guiding document, so it's giving recommendations. So it's recommending that we work on redeveloping the downtown, but it's not, you know, the actual regulation code that we're going by. So that's where we're going to have to write those types of stipulations within our APFO and how we're going to handle those situations. So we're definitely going to need Jay's input on some of this stuff.
Yeah, because we got to balance the amenities, right, and the services along with the influx. And so that is going to be a big project that I know you're going to be equipped to help us handle, so I appreciate that. The other question I had was on, I guess, starting with the approved development section in Excel here. It looks like just under 6365 Crane Highway, the numbers start to get red on the water demand. Is that, is that red alert zone as far as we're getting low?
No, those are, those are estimated. So those are commercial developments that, so for Hawthorne Commercial, for example, we only have a building permit in for the Shell. Now, that building could accommodate anywhere up to, I believe it was, seven tenants. But we don't have individual building permits to know what those tenants are going to be. So we've done estimates based on a retail Shell building. Same with 145 Rosewick's Unit 101 and 102. We know that they're going to be, we've seen some things on Facebook. We haven't received anything yet. But kind of office, different types of office spaces. We do know that there's a gas station at Rosewick Corner. So we do have state flow factors that we can utilize to kind of make estimates. But that's why those are red, is because those are not definitive numbers and they're subject to change.
Okay, thank you so much.
Questions for Director Harrington?
That was on, that was just a...
Just, I'm sorry, just a clarification question, if I may, real quick. You mentioned that a developer, when he goes to record their plat, final plat, and it's not signed off because there's no allocation, they don't, they can't do it. So is that after the planning commission approves the plat? Or can the planning commission deny a final plat because of that?
They can deny a final plat. And we, like I said, we generally aren't going to take something to planning commission if we know that we're not going to have the water and sewer for it.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I was just going to say to sort of reiterate what Councilman Trolinger was getting to. That was one of my questions to Ms. Harrington is, you know, how do we ensure that we're not chewing up all of our available allocation in just residential? We are a center of commerce and we need to have some sort of allocation set aside, if you will, or... I don't know, set aside is the best term, but available for commercial development. Because, you know, as you know, as the more rooftops go up, the more need for services and commercial opportunities is also going to increase. So I would like to see us try to avoid that sort of snafu, if you will, to utilize all our allocation just for residential use and not have something associated or available to address the future commercial worth that we're going to, we'll see as a result of the rooftops.
That makes sense. We could certainly, I know we alluded to that kind of under the traffic section when we were saying that if it's in the downtown core, that maybe it'd be exempt from a traffic impact studies because we're trying to promote redevelopment. I'm not saying that we're going that way, just that's part of the discussion. But that is also something that we can, obviously, we can't exempt someone from water and sewer. But we can, as just like we do with school seats, we have a certain percentage that we have four pools right now that each pool has a certain percentage. You know, we can go somewhere along those lines, but again, we can, we can look at different options on how to handle that.
So would this be the place where the Buxton Study comes in? Because right now, developer, I mean, commercial folk aren't coming. They're not, you know, approaching us because we don't have the rooftops. Would a study to see the rooftops that we're proposing or planning help identify maybe if this particular business would want to come based upon the number of rooftops? I mean, because if we don't have them in the pipes, if nobody is knocking on our door, you know, do you not build because you hope that a business would want to come here? That's a, you know, a fine balancing act. You have no indication that this business wants to come. There's no, nobody's approached us and had a conversation. So how do you balance that out?
I think right now with our, like with our school seat allocations, like we said, we have the four pools. And I'm not saying we have to do it just like this, but we have the four pools. Each pool is allocated 25% of the school seat allocations. If by, you know, if there are no allocation utilized in one of the pools, you can pull that and utilize it in a different pool. So there could be some kind of mechanism in place where if there is no commercial development that's proposed or something, you know, at the end of a fiscal year, we could transfer those over to something that's in the waiting line.
Makes sense. That would be a good option.
Thank you. And I encourage council, if you do have, after you have digested this a little bit more, if you have any questions for Director Harrington or Director Stahl, reach out to, through the town manager to make sure that we get it properly. But ask the questions, you know, send it to the town manager and he'll disseminate it as needed and make sure that we are all informed so that we can be on the same page and talk the same, talk and walk the same walk on that. Thank you very much. All right, am I cleared to go to the next one? 5.1. Traffic keeping a hold of me there. Councilman Bryant Ward? All right, legislation.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. Ordinance 23-04, repeal of Chapter 105 Fire Prevention. This is for introduction only. An ordinance concerning Chapter 105 Fire Prevention for the purpose of repealing Chapter 105 Fire Prevention.
Thank you very much. I think all questions have been answered from that, asked and answered. All right, 5.2.
Madam Mayor, Council, Emergency Ordinance 23-06, Chapter 101 Fee Schedule Amendment. This is for introduction and consideration for adoption as an emergency ordinance. An ordinance concerning FY23 Fee Schedule Amendment for the purpose of amending the fee schedule dealing with the fees set by the town of La Plata in all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept Emergency Ordinance 23-06 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt Emergency Ordinance 23-06, FY23 Fee Schedule Amendment as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Imposed, motion carries. Brings us to our next ordinance, which is 23-03.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, Public Ethics Code Revision. This is for consideration for adoption. An ordinance concerning Public Ethics Code Revision for the purpose of amending Chapter 20 Ethics to implement changes mandated by state law and to specify investigation, hearing, and decision procedures.
Thank you very much. We saw this last week for an introduction and now it is here for adoption. Do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 23-03 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 23-03, Public Ethics Code Revision as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that now brings us down to new business and our commission reports.
The Examining Board, again, has not met since last time. But the Historical Commission did meet last week and they were kind of rehashing things that have taken place since last fall. Mainly discussing the caboose and the sound system within the caboose itself. They had a few, I guess, restored a letter from the Navy for utilization of the caboose. They now have a mannequin provided by right here with a Navy uniform. And they're preparing the tornado book for the 100-year review. And they want to put up possibly more signage within the caboose itself.
Thank you so much. Councilman Trolinger?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Beautification met last Friday. We are continuing to go through developing new street banners for downtown. Signing process that we've been kind of working our way through the last couple of meetings. I did want to thank our Beautification Committee for all the hard work and putting up and taking down the holiday decorations over the winter season. They always do such a great job spicing up our town hall and making it look nice for us when we come in and for any residents. So I wanted to thank them for that. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Bryant Ward? Okay, and Councilman Jayce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had given an update on our Parks and Recreation Commission last week and we meet again in, I think, February the 11th, our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only thing that I have, I mentioned once, was the polar bear plunge, which will be February 3rd. And the next time we meet is February 14th. So I am sure we will have a very robust conversation on how that went. And then this Saturday, January 28th, we will have a ribbon cutting at 113 Howard Street. I see it's a central station, a yoga studio. They have been really promoting this grand opening ribbon cutting. So 12 o'clock on 113 Howard Street. And, but there's more.
Point in time tomorrow.
Oh, that's correct. Thank you. There is point in time tomorrow. I know I am participating, are you participating?
I am today.
Okay, so we have council members that have or will participate. And I always choose the coldest or rainiest day, so thankfully, they're not going to disappoint me tomorrow with the rain. So we are supporting lifestyles and the point in time. And that will be from 9 until 2 tomorrow. And then they have an evening shift as well. So thank you for that. And I really applaud council getting out there in, participating in local events and being part of the community that you represent. So thank you so much for that. And we do have a reason to go into closed session tonight. Do I have someone who would like to make a motion? Do I have someone who would like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion for statute of authority to close session, State Government Article 3-305B14. Reason is a 6355 Crane Highway.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will take roll call. If you approve going into closed session, please say aye. If not, say nay. Councilman Goldsmith?
Aye.
Councilman Challenger? Oh, that's a little premature, but that's all right. We got you.
I thought that would be a nice delay. So if they started.
Aye. Councilman Jenkins?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mayor James, aye as well. Thank you very much. I move to adjourn this meeting.
This concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you for joining us.